Call to order the regular April 15th meeting of the zoning commission for the town of Simsbury. Appointment of alternates, we don't have any alternates. We have four regular members, which is good. Approval of the minutes. I read, I didn't really have any.
I just saw one typo. Line 143. Alternations, I think it was meant to say alterations. But everything looked fine to me.
All right. All right, so I move we adopt the minutes as presented with the one typo correction. Good. All right. So item number four on our agenda is a public hearing. This public hearing actually was begun two weeks ago at the April 1st meeting and was left over, opened by the commission. As such, I don't think it's necessary to actually read a call for this. We'll read a call for the second piece. We did this, we left it open intentionally to allow further comment. We were a little concerned that perhaps this hadn't been as publicized as we hoped. We recognized that today was vacation week, but that we thought maybe any feedback from our previous meeting would encourage other people to attend. Andy was here two weeks ago. Glenn was here. Ed Lamontaine is with us and Attorney Donahue. So if you'd like to speak, we'd be, we'd welcome your comments. Ed, thank you.
Sure. The rest couldn't afford the admission, huh?
Yeah.
Good evening. Ed Lamontaine, reside for George Street. I am the Executive Director of Simsbury Housing Authority, also Chairman of the Town of Simsbury Aging and Disability Commission. In 1989, the State of Connecticut Legislature adopted Section 8-30G about the Connecticut general statutes with the goal of each municipality to provide 10% of the housing stock as affordable. Currently, Town of Simsbury has 311 units, which qualifies as affordable housing, which equates to 3.41% of the total. That includes 110 managed by the Simsbury Housing Authority, 50 at Eno Farms, and 81 at Willow Arms in Terriffill. To achieve the goal of 10%, the Town of Simsbury would have to add 600 more affordable units. However, this may not be practical for a variety of reasons, yet the town should recognize that the building of any affordable units provide valuable housing resources for the town. In recent years, 80-30G has been amended to allow municipalities a four-year moratorium from Section 8-30, 8-30G applications. Each time a municipality increases, its affordable housing stock by 2%. The town may apply and receive a four-year moratorium from developing, development applications seeking to use the 80-30G. However, 2% still equates to 182 affordable units. The bottom line is that the town will need to address the issue of affordable housing before we are mandated to do so by the state. And just to be clear, affordable housing is defined as that housing which could be afforded by households earning 80% of the annual area median income per HUD, which currently is $45,500 for one person, $52,000 for two people. The Aging and Disability Commission has a subcommittee on affordable housing, and we're going to be working on this issue in more detail going forward. We have had many individuals approach us, including seniors, persons with disabilities indicating their need for affordable housing in town. I think it's important that we, as a town, also develop a draft affordable housing plan, and the commission will work towards developing that plan. I encourage you to take a serious and committed look at increasing affordable housing in town, whether it be through the workforce housing overlay zones or incentive housing zones. And while I agree it's important that affordable housing be developed for the town's workforce, let us not forget the housing needs of seniors and persons with disability. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let me just interrupt to say that Ned Cosgrove's coming. Ned, you were seated this evening for Amy.
Okay.
Put the record to show. Anyone else wish to speak?
Mr. Secretary of the Miss Chairman, as you know, Amy said that she wouldn't be able to make the meeting this evening. She did send in an email, and I told her I would put it in the record. She said that she would like to move to action if there's no further public testimony against this particular workforce housing zone. She supports it. The changes look fine to her. That's all she had to say right now, but she just wanted that read into the record.
Thank you. All right, hearing no further public comment, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move we close public hearing.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We, let's stay with our agenda and go ahead and read the call for the second public hearing, then we can act after that.
A public hearing will be held on Monday, April 15th, at the main meeting room of the Simsbury Town Offices, 933 Hop Meadow Street for the following. A revision to Article 7, Section C9b1, and Article 7, Section C9b2 of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations regarding accessory dwelling units. Copies of the proposed changes are available at the office of the town clerk, at the land use office, and on the town website, Land Use Department page at www.simsburyconnecticut.gov. At this meeting, the public is invited to speak. Signed, Edward Pavage, Secretary.
Do you want to give just a little overview?
Mr. Chairman, this is a proposed, staff proposed revisions to Article 7, Section C9b1 and b2. It has to do with the size, permitted size of accessory apartments, also called accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Staff has proposed the changes that you have in front of you as part of this hearing this evening. I've asked Howard Beach, the zoning enforcement officer, to come in as well to sort of give you an idea of some of the things that he runs into on a, not necessarily daily basis, but I'd probably, probably weekly basis anyway, with regard to these items, in case you have any questions on that. So the changes that you have in front of you are the ones that staff recommends, and we're hopeful that if anybody else has comments or changes, we're happy to hear those as well, so.
So the zoning commission took this under advisement at our previous meeting and recommended that we have the public hearing. Generally, in favor of these, but we were anxious to hear if there was any feedback from the public. Howard, you're welcome to make your pitch.
Basically, amendment to zoning regulations, 2002, accessory dwelling units, kind of step towards realizing the needs of people in the town. People love the town, they'd like to be able to stay here, but they get to an age where quite often they're not able to do that completely on their own. And if they can create an apartment or something within their existing home and stay in the apartment and have one of their kids living with them, it allows them to stay in the community. Unfortunately, at the time, I think the board was concerned about a mass of buildings being converted, so they put in that five-year rule where no space could be converted to house an elderly parent or create an accessory apartment unless it's been there for five years. And what we're finding is, I'd say 90 some odd percent of these units are created by a fairly sudden medical need. Usually, it's somebody has a stroke, or there's, you know, we've had one recently where there's a divorce in the family, and the in-laws are coming back to sort of watch the kids or something. But most of the time, it's something that develops rather rapidly. And so, the need is there, but under the current regulation, they're not allowed to do it for five years. So it sort of flies in the face of the need that was created initially. So we recommend, since this has been an issue in a number of circumstances for the last year or so, we're recommending that the board just drop that five-year requirement. The other requirement that's being looked at is the maximum size. Gross floor area, the accessing dwelling unit may not exceed one-third of the gross floor area of the single-family dwelling, or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. For the most part, the 1,000 square feet has not been overly onerous. I think we've had one or two people have had a problem with that, where they had an elderly parent living with them that required a permanent caregiver, so they had to have two bedrooms as part of the addition. And that was the only instance I can think of when the 1,000 square feet just didn't work. The thing we're having more trouble with is the one-third rule. You get some of the older homes in town that are in the single-story houses, 24 by 30 or somewhere, that are less than 1,000 square feet. So limiting to less than a third of the space, that coming up with 300 square foot accessory dwelling, which you can't physically fit a bedroom with a bathroom in that space. So, again, we are recommending that that one-third requirement be dropped. It will still have adequate protection in terms of size and change in the external appearance of a home by going with a 1,000 square foot minimum or maximum for any addition.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this topic?
Thank you. For the record, T.J. Donahue, resident of town, and I'm an attorney in town, and I have frequent appearance before the land use agencies, and I have a lot of significant real estate practice. And I salute you and the staff for the full rework of your zoning regulations, particularly to try to catch up with this little piece. I think it's important, and I submitted some notes to Harlan today, and I hope he'll make those part of the record, and I won't take up too much of your time tonight. But you deserve credit for doing this. Zoning's only 100 years old in the United States, and before that, you could do whatever you wanted with your property anywhere. And we have a lot of that in Simsbury, in Terriffill, in the center of town. We have areas in Wheaton that were before zoning, and they worked, they have some apartments on the side and the like. When the state said you can do zoning in towns, it said in the very same enablement, "But such regulations shall encourage the development of housing opportunities, including opportunities for multifamily dwellings. And such regulations shall promote housing choice and economic diversity in housing, including housing for low, moderate-income housings, and shall encourage the development of housing which will meet the housing needs identified in the state's consolidated plan for housing." And I tell you that just because this regulation amendment will clearly fall within the enablement of zoning in the town. It advances the statutory intent. The accessory dwellings in our community will house seniors, the mother-in-laws and the grandparents, caregivers, young folks, and particularly the handicapped and disabled. Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 likewise encourages a diversity of housing to meet all the housing needs in the community. And so this, this improvement in your regulation will fall squarely in compliance with federal law. And there's been significant societal and cultural change. One of the reasons why we should try to accelerate getting these units in is we're getting older fast as a community. The United States is, the state of Connecticut is, and Simsbury in particular is, so that this type of an investment will create some additional housing units for a changing population. Accessory dwelling units in Simsbury aren't new. There are dozens of such apartments which have been here for decades, they preceded zonings. Others have been constructed since the 2002 work. They work. In my experience, I've had over two dozen circumstances where these types of units have provided wonderful housing for families, kept families here. I've had a young Yukon Denison's wife who lived in an apartment. I had an aging and disabled grandmother who was able to agent place at a home because of this. We've had professional independent family sibling who lives in an apartment adjacent and pertinent to a dwelling. Caretakers do, young professionals do, and in multiple cases, in-laws. It's a very desirable housing product. Your size limitation, I agree with Howard's proposal that you change the minimum from being a third, but I think with the 1,000 square foot area requirement max, I think that pretty much assures that you're not going to have scale problems that are going to change neighborhoods. It will allow them to be complementary to existing neighborhoods, and it will be supportive of our families. Handicapped, accessible, aging in place, caretaker accommodating, and also, it's a security feature for families who have spouses who travel all the time. And I have one client who has been a couple in an apartment on their premises that are delighted that they have that other person living in proximity to the home where someone's traveling all the time. Other community benefits, it enables investment and upgrade of housing, it enhances our grand list, it increases the utility of the housing we have, it increases the ability and desire of the aging to stay in home, creates an income opportunity in some units where people can keep their property going. For, for instance, in most of these places, if you don't have someone that, if you have a tenant in there, it would pay enough to support your taxes, which is not a bad thing. And it complies with a lot of new zoning concepts, new urbanism, infill housing, walkable housing. So I just want to support it. I appreciate what you guys do, and I think that this is a very good, good amendment that should pass.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move we close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you for your participation. We will now move to Agenda Item 5, which is discussion and possible action on any agenda item. So let's first take up the workforce housing overlay zone. I'll start by giving more or less the same preamble I did before we opened the public hearing, which is that we have been talking about this concept the entire time I've been on the commission, off and on, with different names and different ideas. And I believe that we have worked through those in a way that has a great deal of flexibility and accountability for the zoning commission to still stay active in selecting what projects get built and don't get built, but does provide an incentive to developers by giving them higher density option to build these projects. It remains to be seen what those projects look at, look like, and where they will be. And I think the real test of this will be when we actually see projects that still have to come to the zoning commission. But we believe that this is a good thing to do, or I do, anyway. I'll speak to that. Others?
Well, I would support what you just said. I just want to repeat something I've said at prior meetings, and that is that it should be understood that in the future, if this becomes an ordinance, that the zoning commission does have total discretion in accepting or rejecting a developer's proposal. I would hope that we wouldn't find ourselves in a situation where developer could come back and sue us under the grounds of this new ruling that we passed. I assume that's true. I assume our town attorney would agree with that. Full discretion to the zoning commission.
I would certainly tell you this, that, to be absolutely realistic about it, is that anybody could sue for anything.
Well, I understand that.
And, but I do think that you're right, Ed, in that, that if someone were to raise an issue, as long as we do everything procedurally correct, follow the letter of the regulation, we did put in, after the last meeting, we talked about specifically referencing the standards, the special permit standards in the regulation, so those are in there, they need to be looked at carefully when someone brings something in, need to look at the context of the application with the neighborhood that's in. So I would say yes, it would be very unlikely that someone could take us to task and win. Totally.
Well, it's in that spirit that I support.
I have two concerns. One is that in the permitted uses under 10, N5, item number one, mixed use overlaps with a pad, and I think it should be removed from this. I don't think there's any need to mix the two. The others are all residential, which is what this is aimed at. If somebody wants to do a mixed use with affordable housing component, a pad application can do that. And the other part of it is, I'm, 10, Section 10, N9, has a whole lot of design guidelines that are being imposed here, and I'm not sure the creativity that we're looking for is not suppressed by the new urbanism jargon that's being offered here. I think because it's a zone change, what I understand is that the zoning commission has pretty good discretion as to what it accepts or not accepts, and we don't have to prescribe what we want it to look like. We can look at the proposal that somebody brings in and decide whether we like it or not based on its design, that's fine. But this, I think, is an outgrowth of, of something that may or may not stifle the thought of the proposal, the zoning, I'm sorry, the developer.
But again, they are guidelines, and we have flexibility around those.
I'll take off a couple things for Mr. Chairman. I wonder if the Secretary of Misery's comments on the 10 and 5, the mixed use category here is actually developed. I think it made it tough to go on early on in the process to suggest that maybe there would be a product out there that the PAD doesn't address, and that this regulation doesn't necessarily directly address either. And so we added the mixed use category. For example, somebody could do a PAD with residential, no question about that, but there's no requirement in that for any of the affordable workforce housing. And so this, this puts that workforce housing into a mixed use component, into a context that we think would be very potentially desirable. There's no question that somebody could come in and apply for a straight PAD without going this route, but I think by having this regulation on the books, it indicates what the commission's intent, you know, as Mr. Lamontaine sort of indicated before, is we do have a bit of catching up to do with regard to workforce units. And if we can do that and fit it into a design context that would allow mixed use, that would, that would be a plus as well. So we think that that would be a good thing to keep in the regulation. I think the second thing is, as Mr. Pavage said, the design guidelines are specifically that, guidelines. I think that, that guidelines outside of really tightly designed zoning regulations are there to guide the applicant, to show them what we're looking for in terms of context, try to give them an idea as to what they, they might come in with that we find acceptable. It doesn't necessarily mean, though, in my opinion, that if somebody comes in with something that looks exactly like one of those pictures, that you have to approve it, because it may be in the wrong place. It may be the wrong density, it may not have the sewer capacity that it needs. So there are a number of reasons why it could be denied as well, but it gets them headed in the right direction with regard to the design context. So it doesn't force that issue, Dave, but I think, my opinion is, it kind of leads them that way and lets them know that these are the kinds of things that we find acceptable in those contexts. That's basically the idea.
One of my, well, first of all, on the 10 and 5 mixed use, if I remember correctly, the PAD cannot be overlaid on a residential zone. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that this, this has a unique situation, we're leaving it in here, I'm sorry, would permit mixed use in a residential zone, whereas a PAD would not. You can't apply a PAD over a residential, I believe.
That's correct. The way that's written out right there, you're right.
So I'm wrong in my first objection to that, so I'll retract that.
I wasn't going to mention that one. Thank you.
The thing about the other guidelines is, you know what, I don't know, you guys have all been down to Florida and wandered around, and there just seems to have been a lot of building down there that somehow or other gets to look pretty cookie cutter and not attractive, really, even though they're not bad places. And I'm concerned that we're drifting into that sort of a constraint here. You know, we, we could not build high-blind tower under today's rules, bridge line and height and all that sort of stuff. And, you know, in 50 years, we're going to have the most bland committee-designed place if we're not careful to encourage creativity. And I just would like to find us encouraging creative developer activity, even if it's not necessarily colonial. So anyway, that's basis of my comment.
Fair enough. Ned?
I just think it gives us another opportunity to have people do something, another, as I said before, another arrow in the quiver. And, you know, if it gets us some development along this line, I think it's a good thing. I don't see it doing any harm. I guess that's it. As long as the, the people on the design review committee know that these are recommendations and not chiseled in stone, then I think we can work.
Well, I think we've done a fine job addressing the concerns that we've been raising for the last several months. I think we should move to vote. I'd like to move we accept the recommendation. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, second is to act on the revisions to Article 7, Section C9, relative to accessory dwelling units. Again, I, we've talked about this for a while, we talked about it when we looked at the regulation chains over a year ago and didn't act on it. I think that we were of that kind of mind at the time, just didn't get to where we are today. I think it's a good thing, I think the relative scale, 1,000 feet, the one-third, was more math than we should have done, was probably unintended consequences, and yet, and I think that we talked quite a bit last week about the five-year limitation, I think we finally talked ourselves into being comfortable with that. We expressed a concern that without the five-year, you could have a full development of every house that has an in-law apartment, and is that really a bad thing? Probably not, actually. We highlighted a few things on the commission that, just for the record, we'll state again. One is that these need to be owner-occupied, so the owner of the property needs to be in either the apartment or the main dwelling, and that's a fairly good restriction. These do not need to be in-laws or relatives or not, and I think that's clear from the discussion tonight. And they can be income-producing if that's, you know, if they fit all of the other requirements. By and large, in my tenure here, the, there is a family need of some sort that these solve. And I think it's also, over the last month and a half, we've looked at least four or five that are retroactive for people that are selling houses that have these apartment units in them, and they need to be approved. So I don't see any downside to this, I think the staff deals with this on a regular basis, so I'm in favor of following their recommendation.
I have one concern. My concern is, I'm all in favor of the use of it as we've seen it, and I think as we, the applications that have been made here as far as needs for family, whether it's elderly family or young kids who are coming back home, I think all those are terrific. My concern is, if, strictly on the five-year, I have no problem with the percentage, the 1,000 square feet and a two-thirds from the one-third. A little concern about what could happen with removing the five-year plan, as was mentioned, it could be something where it, and hard development is, is created. I don't, I think that even with existing properties, I think people have a right to expect what they, that the neighborhood they move into is maintained as that kind of a neighborhood. If this is taken to an extreme, which we have not seen, and so I don't have any reason to think it would be, you can turn a single-family neighborhood into a multifamily neighborhood, because every house becomes a house with an adjoining rental property. That's different than having your grandmother or mother staying with you above the garage. So I'm not sure that the five-year is the best way to address it, it sounds like that may have been the concern when it was put in place. And I guess the five-year certainly doesn't, only really addresses new properties, it doesn't, it doesn't address whether someone could do what I'm talking about, and whether an established neighborhood could become one that it, that goes from single-family to multifamily, because people have the right. Well, it's not necessarily a right, though, is that they still have to come before us.
That's right. Exactly what I was going to say, well, I think that any of these are, they're still special permits under our current regulations. So you're going to get to see them whether they're brand-new houses or whether they're 100 years old. Still going to get to see them.
So the neighbors will have an opportunity to come in. So the neighbors will have an opportunity to come in.
That helps. I just, I have a little concern about that, about people using it for economic reasons and turning their properties into rental properties and the kids are gone and all of a sudden they can make some income. And that's really not what the other neighbors are expecting to be as far as what, you know, the neighborhood looks like, in my view, anyway.
I think, as Chairman pointed out, I think it's really important that the owner of the property reside in one of the units, one or the other. Whether they're an elderly group that wants to reside in the smaller unit or the larger one, that's really important. And staff goes through that all the time with checking out things that sometimes people sort of forget about those things, and so we remind them that, you know, that's what has to happen. Those two things are critical, the special permit part and the fact that the owners need to remain in at least one of the units are absolutely important.
Right.
Current regulation, when an individual sells the house, 30 days the new owner has to keep the apartment occupied by the same.
Okay.
So we do continue to model that moving forward so that they don't turn into simple rentals. I mean, quite honestly, in the time I've been here, about nine years now, I can only think of one that ended up someone just used it for income because they needed it economically and it was income. All of the others have been family-related somehow. Had a couple of special needs children who wanted their independence but couldn't really handle it totally, and that was sort of a perfect scenario for them, their own little apartment, but they're right next door if anything happens, elderly parents. We really haven't seen, other than that one case I can think of, where somebody just did strictly so they could get some more money into their expenses. I'd say they could potentially have.
As far as the limitation on the years, by removing it completely, we talked about the fact that it could be used for a development, but they'd still have to come in for every house in development. Would the developer do that? The developer would come in and say, "I'd like to build a street full of houses that all have apartments attached to them."
Yeah, I'd have to go to the zoning commission.
I suppose they could do that. More likely what they would probably do would be design it sort of schematically and let the new owners come in. I don't think they would do that.
Now, doesn't the applicant have to be the owner, the occupant as well, one of the two?
Right.
So the developer couldn't do it?
Okay.
Unless he lived there.
Unless he lived in all of them.
Just theoretically, somebody could come in who is a developer of the property and still the owner and get the approval, but as Howard said, once that transfers to somebody else, the new owner would have to either let us know that it's discontinued or come in and get the proper permit.
How do we know that the owner still lives there?
I can tell you, Howard can probably tell you better than I, what could they go through on a daily basis, but we have, neighbors on either side will probably pretty much tell us if there's any issues or problems there. Whether there's too many cars in the driveway, whether there are too many kids, whatever the situation is. And typically, that's how many of these issues will come to our attention, is that the neighbors are probably very good watchdogs. By and large, people are pretty good about that. They want the property that they own to be kept up and maintained pretty well.
Hitler Youth is the only thing we have as far as finding out whether the people have left. You know, the guy moves away. And as far as we know, we don't keep track of people when they move, and now he puts another tenant into the house, and now we have no owner occupation and we have a two-family house.
Yeah, but we do know who owns it. I mean, we work closely with the assessor and the tax collector all the time. Unfortunately, sometimes we also work closely with the police department. Issues come up, so we keep close contact with all those departments to make sure that if there are any issues that come to our attention. And that's not to say that this never happened and it didn't happen and we didn't know about it, because it certainly is possible. But I think we keep a pretty good handle on it. As far as I know, there are nothing outstanding that we're aware of where this has become an issue that we haven't been able to get a good handle on it very quickly.
Ironically, the real estate industry has actually been, we've covered most of it illegally because it's a tremendously popular concept these days. And so when someone's going to sell a house, they market it with an in-law partner. And, you know, we see the ads in the paper or we have people that are coming and are looking at the home, and they're looking for permits, and they go right down the line. And if there's no permit, that's why in the last month or two, you've seen four of these retroactive applications because mortgage company won't give them a mortgage if there's an accessory apartment in there unless they concede that everything was approved, they won't act them a mortgage. So ironically, that's been the way we've caught most of these that were illegally created. So we do have a fairly good handle on them when they do market them.
And so the special exception is recorded on lay records?
It is, yes. In order to become effective, that's right.
But then that gets back to the question of extinguishing that right if the guy sells the property to Islam. Somebody wants to rent the property and have two apartments there. What does our town attorney say about our situation there?
Well, it's a violation of the property.
Yeah, the special permit can be limited in terms of time if it's known at the front end. You can't decide you're going to give somebody a blanket special permit forever without that requirement. The requirement that it ceases upon sale of the property is right in the regulation. So it's granted with that requirement in the front end. So you can't come in later on and say, "Well, you never told me about this, so we're just going to continue to do it." As long as that requirement's known at the front end, we're in good shape with that. We've gone through that with the town attorney before.
I think we're being particularly aware of perhaps unintended consequences that we never actually find ourselves.
We do actively pursue those when we find they're in violation and bring them to task.
And they are brought to our attention by the police on the case. I just don't know if there's any coordination between the zoning commission and the police department when we find out.
We had one that Howard, in the four years I've been here, that Howard brought that actually did it in violation of being told not to do it. Not very comfortable, but it can happen.
And what happens when we find out that the people that are living in the house, neither one of them own it?
Well, there's a whole process that we're really, unfortunately, very familiar with where the initial letter contact is usually by telephone initially, then they get a notice of violation, then they get a cease and desist letter. There's a whole process that we go through with a time that needs to be cleared up by. If it's not cleared up by that time, we can actually issue fines on a daily basis going forward. If they don't clear it up within a certain period of time, those fines continue to pile up. They have the opportunity at that time to go to a hearing officer. The hearing officer is not supposed to waive the fines, although we're working on trying to make that process better and well, or they can go to court. The potential for the town, you know, putting a good fine on somebody who willfully violates the regulations is certainly there as well.
And these fines are in the form of a lien?
They can be.
It's enough paid in the form of, it's $150 a day, so it's enough to get their intention. And each day is a separate and distinct defense under the regulation or under the Enabling Act for that matter as well, check for 124.
All right. How does she got? I'm looking for a motion.
Move, we accept these modifications to our zoning regulation.
Second?
All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry.
This regulation, as well as the other one, if you could just also mention the effective date of the amendment. My recommendation is May 1st for both of those.
Thank you.
That's true. We'll actually adopt the resolutions. Did everyone get a chance to look at the draft resolution? So we'll adopt those resolutions for both of these, which have an effective date of made. So if the movement's amended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right. Thank you, Howard. Discussion on possible action on other agenda items. The next is the Design Review Board process and discussion. As you may all be aware, the Charter Revision Commission, among other things, made the Design Review Board a permanent board. One of the other changes they made was that that board would be appointed by the zoning commission. They also modified or described the role of the Design Review Board as it relates to an advisory role with the zoning commission. Just for the record, this was not something the zoning commission went out and tried to make happen. It was a consequence of the charter review and revision process. However, once the charter was revised and approved, became our responsibility to deal with this issue. And we created a subcommittee to discuss this and make recommendations. That subcommittee was Dave Ryan, Ed Pavage, and myself. And we met a couple times and have made a proposal of how we will proceed to select the members of the Design Review Board. Looking for the board plans from that. Thank you very much. So.
Does that circulate to all of us, or?
It was in the package. It was attached to the, on the email that we got from Kerry. Did you get it? Had a chance to look at it?
I don't do emails.
Okay. The, so the process basically will be similar to any appointed board in the town where the recommendations and nominations will come from the town committees. And that the subcommittee had recommended that we have staggered two- and four-year terms for the permanent seats on the Design Review Board. The town attorney disagrees that we have the opportunity to do that. He believes that the charter revision does not allow for a two-year term, even if it's only the initial term. This is, I'll throw this into the category of unintended circumstances. Almost every other commission and board in town has staggered terms so that you have continuity from one period to the next instead of everybody up for appointment and reelection. Continues to be our recommendation that we do that, but if we're statutorily restricted from doing it, we'll have to deal with it some other way. So let's assume that the town attorney is correct and we can only do four-year terms. Then the town committees would recommend candidate, slates of candidates for these. We would also solicit and ask for volunteers who wanted to work on the Design Review Board to submit applications and resumes, and there will be a process for that. We would basically look for both the nominations from the town committees and personal nominations to happen by April, I mean, excuse me, August 15th. And then we would undertake, as a zoning commission, a review process of all of those applicants. And if that included reading the applications, looking at their qualifications, interviewing if necessary, and come up with a slate that the zoning commission then would vote on at a zoning, regular zoning meeting with the intent of trying to have that whole process be concluded by October 15th prior to the town elections on the first week of November. The, some discussion about the qualifications. We will prepare a list of those. Have we done that yet? Let's start to work on it. Okay. So the Design Review Board itself has a list of what the qualifications that they felt were necessary. But again, this is our responsibility now, so we will take those, look at them, and either augment them, alter them, or come up with our own set of criteria. We certainly will welcome all of those longstanding and serving Design Review Board members that would like to run. Hopefully, that will come either from the nominating process by their own town committees or by their volunteering to apply for this position. Certainly, they will be given strong consideration for the great jobs that they've done for the town. We would hope to continue to have this be an advisory position where, you know, meaningful experience career-wise would be an important thing to have, not necessarily a complete requirement. Certainly, a well-intended layperson from town with experience that's relevant and a desire to serve the town would be given strong consideration as well. That's my view. So those processes are laid out in this page and a half memo. It's incumbent upon the subcommittee, meaning me and Hiram, to get the application and the qualifications done and posted on time. We need to communicate this to the Design Review Board. I have not done so because I wanted to have this discussion with the full zoning commission first. Certainly explain to them what the plan is, communicate this to the town committees so that they can put this in in their normal nominating timeline process. I think that further, we do hope and continue to think about things we need to do on the process and interactions between the zoning commission and the Design Review Board to improve that process. Some of these came out of the meeting we had last June, the joint meeting with the Design Review Board. Some of those suggestions include joint meetings when we have informal presentations for large developments, communication from the staff and Hiram's office as to items that are potential review items by Design Review Board so that we, the zoning commission is aware of those items that have been referred to the zoning commission, I mean, excuse me, to the Design Review Board so we can keep tabs on the time and the number of meetings they have. Also, a strong suggestion that if, out of convenience and the need for expediting applications, things go to the Design Review Board before they've been to the zoning commission. That actually happens now almost by nature. That we will certainly be made aware of those at our next regularly scheduled meeting and that would be a firm, firm hope that they would only go to the Design Review Board once before we had had a chance as a zoning commission to look at an application and understand what issues, if any, the Design Review Board might have that has sent them, the applicant, back to do additional work. Again, this may be more of a perceived problem than a real problem, but sometimes by the time they actually, applications get to the zoning commission, they have been to the Design Review Board two or three or four times. And so that's something we want to try to improve upon. And I think that's the summary of it. So I'd be glad to have comments from the regular members. Fortunately, well, you haven't, this is the first time, and Ned, hope to hear from Amy and Jerry and the others as well about their thoughts on this. We will take a comment.
Four-year term.
Four-year term. There are six regular members and three alternates, correct?
Up to three alternates.
Up to three alternates.
A year and a half into it, someone decides they don't want to do it anymore for some reason or another, do we appoint the, go through the process to find somebody new?
What I envision is it would happen exactly the same way it does now, except that instead of having, so if, let's say, one of three things. If it's a Democrat and the Democrats want to nominate a replacement, then they would make that nomination to us and then we would approve it. The way it works now is that nomination will be made, goes to the board of selectmen, the selectmen approve it. So the only thing that's different is that the deciders are us and them.
Do we appoint them then for four years or for the remainder of the term?
No, they would be appointed, generally speaking, again, this is a Bob, a town attorney question, but whoever is appointed is appointed to fill the remainder of that term and then would have to run again when that, actually, until the next election. So even if it's one year in, they would still, they would have to run the next townwide election.
I believe that's true.
No?
No. They don't run, number one.
Well, true, but this process will happen every time that the zoning commission appoints.
We're reappointing them every four years.
Right.
So there, when we replace somebody, they would.
That's true. It would have to be on that four-year cycle, which is to our staggered. Which is why we think strongly that there should be a staggered.
Right. Good. Okay. So if, a couple years into it, somebody leaves, we'd appoint the next person for, not for the remainder of the term, but for four years?
No.
Not for the remainder of the term. For the remainder of the term.
I don't understand why, if the zoning commission's on staggered terms, why they can't be on staggered terms. I don't know where Bobby D's coming from on this.
I'll tell you where he's coming from. He's reading the words in the Charter Revision literally. It says that they will be four-year terms, and this is a brand-new deal. They all start the first year. You know, there was the old Design Review Board. This is the new Design Review Board, and so. This is the new design review board, and so in his mind, there's no provision that allows them to have a term of anything other than four years. Does that be fair to?
Typically, appointed commission members, even when their term expires, they stay on there until someone is reappointed.
That is a good point.
So if we appointed three members for four years, until the other three, we don't do anything with them, they just stay on there. Then two years later, we appoint three people for them. And then two years later, we appoint three people for them. We've essentially gotten the staggered terms, and we appoint them for four years.
They all start the same day.
No, because if they're on there, they stay there, until we appoint somebody new.
But what do you leave on there when you have how many members now? You've got a dozen members on there.
This is a problem that needs to be fixed, and it, yeah, will, I think it's a mistake to have everybody up.
Ned's right. We could fix it in the second period. We couldn't do it in the first period, because the first go-around, they have to be appointed for four. Then, at the second time, we appoint them, if we only appoint four of them, the remaining three continue to serve according to our charter. They serve until they've been replaced, and at two years, we could replace them with four.
Yeah.
So Ned's got it.
That is one way to approach it.
Just takes us eight years to do it.
I won't be around. I, I just. We will accept a comment from the audience.
Could you answer maybe a couple of my questions? You got a term limits? That charter stays?
It does not.
I was going to suggest having a four-year term, and then have three or four of them at six-year, so you get your staggered, but evidently you can't.
It's the same problem. I mean, if we can't do two-year and four-year, we can't do four-year and six-year. I mean, I thought the same thing, but it's, I get it. I'll reach out to Bob and see if I can.
The other thing, I think, I'm not sure I heard you say that, but you ought to list the things that they should take a look at, because we had one about the, some athletic field, I don't know, some, about, I mean, put down what they should be looking at, rather than the stuff that.
Yeah, this is part of the process improvement, and it, again, requires that we actually do some work and write things down, that what does it mean to be advisory to, what kinds and, you know, for instance, in-law apartments do not require design review board, and I don't think they go there now. But they do a lot of signs, and they do a lot of, almost every cycle.
Lights.
Love lights. Lights and signs.
Onion-shaped lights.
Onion, no onions. What, no, yeah, that's not what they were called. Was that the ones that, at the Charles?
Non-dark sky. These were acorn lamps.
Acorn, that was, they weren't onions, they were acorns.
Acorn lamps. Those are herbal.
The great compromise. We digress.
So the idea is to get this up and running and have them appointed.
In October.
Date in the fall.
Yeah, yeah, we would like to do it, have this seated commission approve the first slate, which take, they would take office in December, along with the newly-elected other boards and everything else.
Make sure we make this appointment prior to the election.
We, yeah, we will have a timeline to make sure that that happens.
So if we did like October 1st, is it guaranteed that we'd have at least one zoning commission meeting between there and the election, so?
Right. Yeah, no, the deadline for application will be August 15th. For application or nomination, it would be August 15th. That gives us a month and a half to review the applications and interview if we see fit, or we have, you know, 10 people applying for six jobs, and then the opportunity in September or October to review the slate, make a recommendations, and have at least one or two meetings where we.
We have to make sure we have at least one zoning commission meeting to do this prior to the election.
Right, so that, the target was October 1st, with a fallback to October 15th. And you have to be careful, because one of those days could be Columbus Day weekend or.
We'll work through that.
We'll be sure we. All right? Again, this is not designed to be hugely controversial, but it's designed to be responsive to the task given to us.
The only other thing I, I guess I kind of like would be that after a developer or someone goes through design review, that there'd be some sort of a questionnaire that they fill out, just how the experience went, just so we can get it. We have a lot of anecdotal data about people with the design review. I think if we could actually get some comments from people, it may give us a better insight into just what's going on.
I agree with you. I think that the developers will love to talk in the hallway, but not on the record.
Yep.
I think this is about, this really is our challenge, is to be more active managing the process, because it reflects on the entire land use department of the town of Simsbury. We should have a solid front about how we, how we treat applicants and how they come. And that's, again, not, not to say that we've been abused, it's just saying that it's a step in the process that is not currently managed completely. It's, I mean, these people do a great job. Amy and his team have given great service to the town.
I just feel if it's part of the process before they go for the, decide whether or not they want to run for it, might alter their.
Yeah.
Come over here, Jerry. Oh, is there an item? I'm sorry.
What is it? Oh, what's up with Hartford?
Sorry.
No, it's not going to be holding.
I didn't say. Mohegan Sun's.
Has another year.
Mohegan Sun's looking ahead and out.
I'm not sure if I gave you these before or not, but if I could.
I'm going to really leave with my chin here and say, is the zoning commission represented on this? Is that me?
At this point, it is.
Will has a conflict.
Do you have a conflict?
I had, I had thrown Will under the bus.
So there was one, one committee that was, committee meeting that was set up to talk about whether we should go forward.
Committee did meet. Not all the members were there, of course, because a couple of people were away, but the board of selectmen did also vote at their last meeting to proceed forward with this, with this joint land use study. I put together a couple of slides there, just for some background information of what this is all about. We met with the Hartford several times, and the idea is to find what the best plan for that property would be going forward in the future, that 172-plus acres going forward. Hartford's been very receptive to doing this, and I think, we think that we can, we can improve the number of potential buyers for the site. We think that we can get broad level of public acceptance for the site. We don't, definitely don't want another situation where there's a significant conflict of what people are proposing to do, and the public doesn't know about it, and the public doesn't accept it. We think that we can drive this process very similarly to how we did the town center process, in that there's a broad level of public acceptance and significant additional values created for the properties. That's really important for us to know. The last thing any of us want to see is for them to decide in a year or two that it's either really nothing out there, the town hasn't done anything, nobody really cares, maybe we should just level the building. None of us really want to see that either. So we think there are a number of different possibilities. I put together an RFQ, a request for qualifications. We'd like to send that out to the consultants, to a number of consultants across the country by late Wednesday. So I've asked the committee folks to get back to me with any questions or comments that they may have on it. Some people have had comments, nothing really substantive about the RFQ, but just, you know, kind of, why are we doing this and so on. So that's why I wanted to give you this sheet this evening. The study, it will cost $175,000. The town portion of that is $30,000. The Hartford has agreed graciously to fund the balance of it as well. Obviously, they think it's in their best interest to do the same thing. They've also agreed to have us, town, this committee, the Hartford Study Committee, be part of this whole process, and even talking with the realtors that come in and interview for the process. So that's been, been very nice as well. We think that this is a very different type of plan than the center plan, but we think we can come up with some significant advantages to doing things this way. Don't know exactly what it's going to look like yet. We don't have any idea. We're not predetermining that, but we need highly qualified professionals that have done this stuff in various parts of the country to talk to us about what their, what their views are, and then put the code to that, so that we can actually get a regulation that might allow them to do that. Whether that code gets really put on that property or not is going to have a lot to do with whether Hartford likes it and whether they think it's, it's good and worth moving forward. So that's why the coordination through this whole process is really important, so that they're on board throughout this whole process as well. So like, the town center code was adopted unanimously by the commission. Once we actually got it to that stage, we're hopeful that this will, this will be the same thing. So that in a nutshell is, it's been a long discussion, but that's basically where we are.
Just a couple of questions. Do we know what portion of the property tax they pay a year is allocated to the building versus the land?
That's what you have there, a million one, Rob, is all, is, that's, that's real property.
Real property, mean land or building?
That's not personal property. It's land and buildings.
No, but I mean, what if they tore the building down?
I thought I had that number there.
It's in here.
The percentage, wouldn't be the ratio of buildings that tow?
Is it the same mill rate?
Not necessarily. The land, the buildings are, well, current seventy, at 70%, that's 28,339. That's the bill rate.
Right. It's the same, same mill rate, whether it's.
Little over, you know, three and a half million for the land itself. So that's a substantial change right there. Could be a substantial change.
However, most of these things, I think, have to do with the price that somebody's willing to pay, and whether the Hartford will accept it or not. The alternative you're going to come down to is the Hartford wants too much money, and so after all of this, they spend some money, and they're going to come back and say, okay, we got to tear it down because we can't afford to pay the taxes on it. The alternative is to auction it as-is, and they may choose not to take that. Those are the hard things for me, you know? Painting it some color, doing some other things aren't going to change that.
Well, we, we think that we can have a substantial impact on the potential value of the property by improving and increasing the value of the property. I don't think that anybody is.
Who's going to do that?
Well, because there are a significant number of different things that could be there. Right now, I don't think anybody is delusional enough to believe that the market for 638,000 square foot office buildings is, is really flying high out there right now. No question about that. So how do we repurpose that site? And how do we change it? Does part of the building stay, does part of it come down? Are different floors of the building used for different things? You know, one of the things that I've talked to a number of boards about is I'm really excited about something called an innovation district. You know, something where people could, maybe they would be, live in, in one particular area of the site, maybe there would be offices in another part of the site. It could be a separate village with a specific purpose of its own. So there could be sections of the building that would be set off for various companies, maybe smaller companies, not a huge one. So there are a whole series of things, and this is where some of the really good retail experts and office people from around the country, and economists from around the country that do this stuff all the time, are really need to be part of this process, so. They could say, you know, we don't, we don't like the plan. We don't think that that's going to be the case, because we think we can show them that the value of the property would be significantly increased by following the type of plan that we're talking about.
But that's not to say that a developer wouldn't come up with a plan of his own that's more creative than what we've developed.
Absolutely. And one of the things I can tell you is that the realtors will be involved, they're, they're talking to the realtors late April, 25th, 26th, something like that. And so once they decide which realtor they want involved anyway, they're going to be bringing people to the table as part of this whole process, and we're hoping that they're bringing in people that are interested in what could happen to the site in the future as well. So we're very anxious to have everybody be part of the process that could possibly have, and we don't, we don't want to shut out any opinions. We want to make sure that if somebody does have a great idea, and they, they talk to the, to the team, the design team, and say, this is what we would like to see there, make this work. So we think that there's a tremendous number of opportunities there. Certainly, we think we have a better chance of doing something and making something really exciting happen there than just having the building go from one owner to the other and probably not remain anything close to what it currently is now. That's our, that's our sense of it, anyway. It's scary what's happened to, you know, Pfizer down below, what's happening, what's happened in Middletown with Aetna, you know, happened in Nogatuck to Peter Paul, just gone, you know? We just assume, sort of, get ahead of that circle, and get ahead of that curve, and try to do something innovative. We think we have a great chance to do it, and heck, they're funding a tremendous percentage of it, so we're anxious to try to do it. I'm optimistic, just, I was optimistic about the center, hopefully, we can pull something off here as well. And by the way, just so people know, if anybody's watching this, I've made the same offer to other large landowners, that if they have the interest in funding us a large study like this, we could do the same thing with other properties in the South End. We could do it, you know, on the Northeast Utilities Property. We could do the same thing for some of the Griffin Land Property. And those plans might look very different, but I would certainly, you know, open the door to saying, you know, all things in good time, but certainly need to, to make that offer to anybody that's interested in doing it. Certainly, the larger landowners will have a, a long impression on the town in the future, so.
So the Hartford on one side has a one-time cost to tearing the building down, or a continuing cost of a million dollars a year, taxes, to try to sell it. Basically, we're faced with. Has there been any thought of maybe reducing the taxes, because the building isn't in use for some reason, to make the tearing it down less attractive?
Yeah, there's, there's a number of alternatives like that. We've talked to, to them, haven't gotten into the details of it yet, but I've written a number of suggestions to the, to the first selectman about tax abatement program that we currently have, and how we could spiff that up and make it more, more proactive. So we're looking at those as well. Board of Selectmen hasn't taken that up yet, but I'm, I'm hopeful at some point that they'll consider those. Those have been in that office for a few months now.
If memory serves me, that was a purpose-built building.
That's right.
It was made for computers. They were afraid that the place in Hartford was going to burn down, and they would be, all their paper files would disappear. Travelers did the same thing in Windsor, and Aetna did it in Middletown. And so if I remember, a great deal of that building is almost like a blockhouse. There's no windows in it. It was, it was the, when, back in the days of the mainframe, you know? And I'm just wondering how, you know, the use seems to have gone away. Mainframes are gone.
Yep, no question. And that's why I think we really need to look hard at this with people that are really knowledgeable about this type of thing, that have done it across the country, and look hard at what the potential repurposing could do.
Amazon and Google.
The cloud.
The cloud. That could be a cloud, Ed.
Yeah, I know. That's the thing.
One, there's a bridge over to Nodbrook.
Well, actually, a couple of people have suggested that, too, so that's probably something that'll get talked about and take a look at. We talked about that during the Route 10 study, remember?
Is there anyone left in the building, or?
Oh, sure. I mean, they, they say that, you know, there'll be people here for, off and on for up to two years, so whether they move faster than that, I have no idea, but.
You don't want to be the last guy left.
The guy that turns off the lights?
Yes.
So anyway, that's, that's where we are, and I'm happy to keep you appraised.
When, when, what are our action plans? Nothing?
Not right now. I mean, I'd like to get that RFQ out. I'd like to ask them to, to get the consultants to get the, their requests, their qualifications back to us within 30 days. So within 30 days of Wednesday, we should have a, hopefully, a series of proposals that will be starting, starting to go through and deciding who we want, that committee wants to interview.
All right, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Now, Dave.
I move me to.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, the good news is Yahoo's bringing everybody back on the ranch.
Yeah, there you go. You can't work from home anymore.